Well, good afternoon and welcome to the work session for Greeley Evan School District 6. Today's the 25th of March 2024. This meeting will now come to order. Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll force, please?
Director Azari?
Present.
Director Bentley?
Present.
Director Campos Pitsi?
Present.
Director Mash?
Present.
Director Matthews?
Present.
Director Norwood? Director Sullivan?
Present.
Six board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. First on our agenda tonight is our calendar review and community engagement. So if everyone will take a look at the calendar before you, we are getting to the busy time of our year. There are a few I want to highlight for you. March, no, I'm sorry, April 3rd. On April 3rd, there's a Centennial School Visit, and that will not take place. So you can scratch that one off of your calendar. The 17th of April, we do have a site visit for transportation. And then on May 1st, there's the District 6 Retirement Celebration at the UNC Ballroom this year. So I wanted to make sure that you had that on your calendar. That's an important one. If we can be there, there are times where we know that we can't all be at an event, but that one's always an important one to try to make if at all possible. So there's also Fred Chortis' visit on the 7th of May and Frontier House Breakfast on the 8th, and also on the 8th, District 6 Online Academy Visit. So we have back-to-back visits on the 7th and the 8th, just to make sure that you guys are aware that anything else between now and the first week of May that we need to highlight. All right. I think that concludes our calendar review and community engagement. We're now to board member comments and reports. And so Mr. Azari, we'll start with you today.
Thank you, President Matthews. Just a short report. Back on February 29th and March 1st, I had the opportunity to attend the Casby Winter Legislative Conference along with Kyle and Nate Fall, and that was the first time for me. Just generally, in addition to observing legislative sessions and attending a committee hearing, we had the opportunity to hear from Phil Weiser, the State Attorney General. We also heard from a Student Advocacy Committee made up of high school students who spoke to what's important to students, and information presented by staff members of Congressman Joe Nagus, who spoke about initiatives to provide affordable housing for our school staff. Dave Young, our State Treasurer, spoke very highly about our school district, and he told everyone in the room, "Y'all need to go and see the great things that are happening up in Greeley." I did take notes and would be happy to share those notes with anyone who might be interested. I also had the opportunity, along with several of the other board members, to attend the Board Visit to Montfort, one of my assigned schools, and I appreciated the opportunity to visit the specials classrooms and learn more about the food pantry and how those pantries provide more services for our families. So that's all I have, President Matthews. Thank you.
Thank you, Doran.
Yeah, it's been a minute. It feels like a month. I think it has been about a month, but spring break was tossed in there, so that was nice. The Casby Winter Legislative Session was a good time with Doran. I got more out of this one probably than any of the other ones I've been to. I finally kind of understand some of the lingo and the way things work, so it was nice to be there as a sophomore instead of a freshman. They have a lot of legislation coming down the pipe that is both, some are very exciting for our district, and on the other side of the spectrum, there's some that is very concerning on a state as a whole pertaining to education. So I just want to reiterate to Nate how valuable his information and keeping us up to date on that was. I was able to talk and have conversations about what was going on because we were so well informed. So that was nice. And then, yeah, Montfort School Tour, it's the first time I've been back in there for a few years. Got to see the bond dollars at work and the upgrades to that school. It looks totally different for doing what they did, just carpet painting and the vestibules and stuff. It feels like a new school, and they're very proud of it. And so it was nice to see that in its all its glory. And then this morning, I got to attend the Success Foundation Breakfast, which is always a great time. So pretty good couple of weeks.
Brenda?
Yeah, so in the last couple of weeks, did get to see Greeley Central's performance of Guys and Dolls, and that was a treat for my husband and I. We made a date night out of it. I really meant to go see Mean Girls at Greeley West, and it just, the stars did not align. But I did buy tickets, so I at least got some. Also enjoyed the Montfort Elementary School Visit, my first time in that building. And so I wasn't able to really compare the before and after of the renovations and the bond dollars that Kyle mentioned, but the administration seemed very appreciative of the facelift that the school got. And a couple of things that stood out from that visit, the smart lab, the kids' excitement in there, working with the robots. Like, I feel old when I go there because they're showing me these robots. They're these tiny little things, and they can follow patterns of colors if they program them a certain way so that they do U-turns or a left turn. I mean, it's just crazy. And they're being exposed to this kind of programming in elementary school, which I just think is really awesome. And the other thing that stood out of Montfort Elementary that they highlighted for us was their intensive autism program. Right now, they're one of three schools in the district, along with Tointon and Centennial, that have intensive autism programs, which is really what it sounds like. They work with some of the more severely autistic children in our community. And I just went home and reflected on how amazing that our public education can support those kids and those families to that capacity. I just, I was left very impressed by that. And their after-school program, the kids who actually led the tours for us are part of a Kiwanis Club, and it's a partnership they have with Montfort. And they teach them to be leaders and to do things like school cleanup and things like that. And the kids were just so proud to show us their school. So ended the weekend on Sunday at UNC. I know not District 6, but there are a lot of District 6 connections with UNC. They had their Dreamer Celebration, celebrating Dreamer Awareness Month for children who've been brought over from other countries when, you know, when they were very young and who want to make a life and get an education here. So really enjoyed that. And this morning, we were at the Success Foundation Breakfast. That was very well attended by our community members at 6:45 in the morning. And one of the speakers, Israel Vargas, who is a senior at Early College Academy and a future doctor, he was one of the speakers, and it was also announced that he's one of the Daniels Fund Scholarship recipients. So felt very proud of District 6 this morning, and it was a great event.
Thanks, Brenda.
Well, I was wanting to do the Montfort one, and I was disappointed I didn't make it to that. But my daughter does a lot of volunteer work on Fridays because at Frontier, she has Fridays off, so she goes in and does a lot of the volunteering with the teachers and whatnot. So that is a special place to me because it's actually where my first five kids, who are now adults, attended that school. So I did tell her that next Friday, we're going to try to buzz in there and see if we can just, she can walk me through what she has actually gotten to see when I'm dropping her off. So I think the negotiations was what was not mentioned here, but I do like how that is laid out. I really appreciate that people are able to come together in one room, that you can put that many people in one room that have differences, but you still hear the respect. You get to hear the concerns, and people actually sit and listen. And I think that's very important when you're looking at an organization such as a school district and whatnot. So I am looking forward to the, was it Thursday night, the Dream Team? I went there last year, and that was really neat. And I just ran into a student that I just adore. He actually works over at Target. I'm not going to say his name, but he's working as a pharmaceutical tech, and he's a senior at Early College Academy and just learned that he got the benchers. So I won't say his name. I'm not going to ruin that one, but I'm really excited for him because he comes from a very strong Hispanic family, and he will be the first one to actually attend college, I believe, out of that family. And they've worked really hard to get him where he is. And I look back, because he has older siblings that attended Central, and the older boy would always come to the house, and I never put the two together. Didn't realize it until the younger one came to me and said, "No, that was my brother." But over the years, they would always hit our house up because we were right across the street. The basketball team lived at our house, so then the baseball team knew where we lived and everything. So we got hit up with a lot of fundraisers, but it's just neat to see the connections within that family and how the schools have supported them to become very successful. So I'm excited about this one.
Thank you, Taylor. Ellen?
Yeah, I would just reiterate that negotiations were a really positive experience once again, and maybe because it's just been, you know, a similar group for the last few years, we were able to kind of get into it a little bit faster, and it felt a little bit more measurable than some other years. And so I'm excited to see what other ideas come out of that. Congratulations to both Greeley Central and Greeley West. I was able to attend both of their musicals, and they were fabulous as usual. Just amazing how they bring so many kids into that. I don't know exactly how many kids were involved at West, but at Greeley Central, there's 95 kids with the orchestra, the backstage, the actors. And so it's, at the Success Foundation today, I heard from so many people in the audience that were just inspired to hear about music and athletics, because that is a lot of times what you're most, you know, maybe, hopefully, we all learn a lot in high school, but some of the biggest memories are from those extracurriculars. And so my neighbor who I brought, she was like, "I played the flute. I want to donate the cost of a flute." And I heard another person say they were going to give a flute to a student. And so that was a really great way, I think, to inspire folks to continue to donate to District 6. And so again, I'm glad that we have these amazing programs at our high schools. At the DAC meeting, we got an update from David Reyes, who is heading up a task force to look at all of the different apps that we use to communicate with parents. And I don't, for those of you who are parents, I mean, we use the Band App, Class Tag, Remind, you know, Facebook, Instagram, emails. Our phones, all four of our phones will start ringing at the same time when we get a district phone call or a school phone call. And so they looked at all the merits, all of the tech, all of the cost, all of the benefits of all of these different apps, and are going to try to whittle it down. Well, they came up with two, and I believe there's one that we kind of already have a contract with using their website. And so maybe we can transition into that app as well. It can translate into 100 languages at least, something like that. So anyway, that was exciting. A lot of the parents were really interested in that, especially if you have a middle school and an elementary and a high school kid, you might be using even more apps to get your information. And so how we can streamline that along with the legislative requirements that are, you know, free to access, things like that. And then, you know, as a parent, I'm going to tennis and diving, swimming meets, and my children have just really experienced amazing sportsmanship in their high school career. And, you know, that's, so I get to see all of the different schools interacting. And so I just really appreciate that about our students, that it seems like we have, I've seen coaches from other schools that scream at their students, and I've never seen that from a District 6 coach. And there's just a lot of great relationship building and mentorship from the older students and the younger students. So I really enjoy getting to observe that.
Thank you, Vice President Mash. I don't have a lot to add. District 6 negotiations were very good. They always are. I think that's, I don't, I think people have an idea when they hear negotiations with Greeley Educators Association, what that would look like. And it just, it never looks like what I think people think it looks like. I don't think people envision people coming together in a circle and everyone getting to say what they think about a particular item, particular policy, or whatever it is that we're looking at. I think people would be, people got to see that would be amazed at how cordial and how productive that always is. And so we do appreciate Diane Groves, who comes and leads that for us every time, and Dr. Pilch for bringing that to us. I should say, Dr. Pilch is not here tonight. She's feeling under the weather and needing some time to recover from a respiratory illness, and so she won't be joining us tonight. Then Greeley Central, Greeley West plays, they were fantastic. I'm biased, I have, my son did the lights for Greeley West. I had a son in the Greeley Central play, but they were great. Chapllo also has a play this week, just so everybody knows, that this is Holy Week, so I know there are a lot of services at churches and things. But this weekend, Chapllo's play is happening, The Pirates of Penzance?
Penzance.
Penzance. Anyway, that's happening, I think, Thursday, Friday, Saturday for Chapllo. And then, yeah, the Success Foundation Breakfast is always fun and a great event. They've done such a great job. And if you look at the amount of money that they've raised since Julie Hill has become the president of the Success Foundation, it is amazing. They have stepped that up, and they provide such incredible resources for our kids and for this district. One that we got to see at Montfort, the thing that I was impressed with, and this is kudos to on a couple of different things. One, because we built a new, secure entryway, our school is safer. That school is safer. But they also get an office that has windows, because apparently their office was in, you know, something of a closet, or at least some of the administrators were in a closet. And they've taken that closet and made it into the food pantry, which the Success Foundation provides the money and the food for. And so thank you to our voters. That is, that bond issue continues to pay dividends in so many different ways, if, and not just making our schools safer, but providing windows for our administrators, and letting us use closets for what they were actually meant to do. Things like food pantries, and thanks to the Success Foundation for everything that they do for us. Yeah, I think that's all that I've got. And so we'll move right along with our agenda. And I think next on our agenda is the Artificial Intelligence Task Force update. So invited presenters to come forward.
Got a little activity to work with a partner.
Do you hear it?
Just a minute here, 30 seconds.
You're my partner.
Can the three of us work together? Can three people work together? You've got kind of an odd number here.
So go ahead with your card, and you can start that task as we get situated here. And also at your table, you have two documents. It's no fun to be you, but it was a stamp on this group. You have something different to do. So you have what's called a charter, an AI charter at your table, and you also have an outline. And so what the outline is, is kind of an outline for our presentation today. And so we'll start by introducing ourselves in this group that's here today. I'm Kent Henson, Assistant Superintendent. So I oversee facilities, all the bond work, custodial, transportation, and IT.
Tony Check, Director of IT for District 6.
I'm Dagan Andrews. I get to serve in the role of Director of Curriculum and Personalized Learning.
And I'm Scott Tussender, Cyber Security Engineer for the district.
Okay, so what we're here is a group that we represent, a larger group, just to talk to you about some of our progress that we've made on AI. And to start with, you have the outline. So that outline is just kind of a brief view of where our presentation is going to quickly be today because we do have a taco bar. So we're going to try to go.
Priorities.
So Tony, why don't you bring up our PowerPoint?
What?
The PowerPoint for the presentation.
I didn't really create one.
Every meeting we do a PowerPoint. Tony?
Sorry, just give me a moment here. Oh, I do have the outline though. Okay, so we all, all of you have.
So we'll give you him a minute.
So this is the outline, right?
For working on your progress, Mr. Matthews, if you would help my Mississippi.
Is this part of the presentation?
Tony, you've got forty-five seconds to get PowerPoint up here.
Where's my chat GPT app?
We always have a PowerPoint for presentation.
I got busy.
You're busy? We're all busy, Tony.
Poor Tony.
Got your Mississippi's?
I'm working on it. Nobody's counting. Don't count.
You guys will have to join the thespian troop. Yeah, you have this all going. Oh, no, Tony's in trouble. Good thing the boss boss isn't here.
Every presentation we do a PowerPoint.
All right. I don't know, maybe this will work. That's me typing, by the way.
Yeah, it's just kind of pace in the inner. It's ridiculous how fast it goes.
Yeah, we passed forty-five Mississippi. It was because I, I was a little slow.
You were a little slow on the start there.
So.
Perfect grade. So this, Tony, is this what we're using?
Well, I mean, we could use that.
Let's, let's look at it a minute.
All right, let me go back to the beginning of it. So there's our work session. So there we go. There's our presentation.
Okay.
That was pretty good.
Let's go to the next slide. So I don't know if you're looking at your outline. Does this look like something we could use?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's go to the next slide. Next slide. Does this look in? See any differences? Similarities?
It's following the outline perfectly.
It's following it perfectly?
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, the outline perfectly. So I think what's missing here, Tony, though, is content.
Okay.
I think what this PowerPoint did is, okay, you saved your bacon and you got us a PowerPoint for this presentation. But I think what we're missing is real content. Because all this PowerPoint really did was copy our outline, right?
Yeah, for the most part. I would think there needs to be some human.
Can you look in the folder that you and I shared and maybe see what I dropped in for you?
Oh, you have a presentation? No. Why would you do that to me?
Well, you were busy. So let's try this and see, see if this works. So what Tony did is he created a PowerPoint presentation, AI and I with, using AI. He and I have done that about 10 times. Every time is different. Sometimes it changed the order. If it felt like things need to be associated differently. So it was kind of interesting. So we didn't, never really knew what would come up. So just to show you that when we're talking about AI, there's a lot of great areas in this. And if we're talking about it in terms of instructional use or learning use or just our own use, you have to be careful because it, it may or may not be useful. It's all about purpose. And then you have to really pay attention to what you're doing. So let's go to the next slide. So we have a task force that Tony will show you the timeline here in a minute that contains 12 people that have these varying titles or work in these various departments in the meeting. We know we need to expand that to include, you don't see students and teachers on there yet. So we know that we need to expand that. But all the research said was start small and then build as you go. So starting small has kind of allowed us to get our feet on the ground, do a little bit of research so that we can make sure that we're moving appropriately. Tony?
Thank you, Kent. So as you mentioned, we established, we were asked to establish an AI task force back in September. By December, we had established partnerships with some other districts, some conferences and conversations, and did some initial research and discovery. And February, the first draft of our AI Task Force Charter was completed and we're still working on that currently. But, and you have a copy of that in front of you. That's a very rough draft of where we're going, kind of our purpose. There are some things missing. The task force has identified a few things, but we're, we're working on that. Again, this is a work in progress. By March, that's, actually, we're almost at the end of March, aren't we? We completed the first draft of some policy work and recommendations. We're also working with an external expert or consultant. Mr. Mr. Fall and the consultant and the task force are working on policy proposals that will come to this board at some point, probably, probably the next meeting, I think. That's the, that's the intent. So in our next formal meeting for the task force is this coming Wednesday. Okay, so we'll, we'll also have our consultant at that particular meeting to provide us with some guidance and, and expertise. So part, part of what we need to ground ourselves as this task force is a definition, a working definition of what AI is for us. So you can read that definition, but in summary, AI is the technology that can mimic tasks normally require, that requires human intelligence. Okay? So I use that word mimic. That's all it's doing right now. We have not reached the point where intelligence is actually intelligence, human intelligence. So, so I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Henson now that we have a working understanding.
So we didn't give you a whole lot of time to do those little projects, those little things that you did. But let's talk about the first one that you got. What was your chore?
We had to use our phones or computers to use a calculator function to multiply fifty-six by six.
But it asked forth as the sum of, so you would have added fifty-six to itself six times.
Okay.
Was that purposeful?
No, it's a mistake.
Okay.
So it was, it was multiply what your two numbers were. You're right. That's where you get the attention. And so you could do that with the calculator, right?
Correct.
And Taylor, maybe you're mathematician. You didn't need a calculator. You just do your numbers and do that. So if I use a calculator to do that function, is that AI?
No, because you're inputting the direct information in input output.
Yeah, it's just input output and the calculator is programmed to do this. And if you put in the wrong numbers, you'll get the wrong answer if you're trying to solve a problem. I had to take algebra twice because when I was in ninth grade, we got those TI eighties. And I knew that if you put in seven, one, zero, seven, seven, three, four, five and turned it upside down, it's a shell of oil. So I spent most of my first year in algebra.
I was at that.
Figure out what other.
It wasn't that one though.
Very cheap.
Calculators, they couldn't spell, you know? So anyway, what's the next one?
Use your phone or computer, using a map app, how long will it take to drive from Greeley to Phoenix, Arizona?
Yeah, what did you find?
Well, would you like to go through Moab or Albuquerque?
Oh, so you have choices. Okay, and are there time differences with the choices?
Yeah, about six minutes.
And we've all used that. And might the time difference depend on the time of day if you have to go through Denver? And so when you're using an app like that, is that app using AI?
I think it's like the calculator. It's taking the distance and the average speed and it's just calculating. I don't know.
Could be. But is it adjusting? Is it adjusting as the environment changes?
It is.
There's a crash.
Yeah.
What does it do? Alternate route. So is that AI? Yeah, those, those apps use some form of AI. Here was the third one.
Third one was using Google, what's the best season to take a Viking River cruise on the Columbia River? And this is what Google says, at least according to Adventure Life. Summer's the best time to visit the Columbia River because the beautiful blue skies are more appealing than the wet dismal skies of other seasons. Columbia River is also attractive in the late spring and early fall before the heavy rains arrive.
Okay, with that information, is that using AI technology?
It's opinion oriented in the sense as well, though.
Could be opinion oriented, or it's based on maybe when it's easier to get tickets served, whatever, but some form. But, and so using Google, if I'm just Googling information, that's not AI so much. However, does Google use AI technology?
Yes.
So whose computer was that?
That was mine.
Is that yours? So you're going to be getting a lot of ads showing up through your stream.
Bicycles and.
So whether you want to go or not, you're going to be getting a lot of information. Okay? And then here's the fourth one.
It says, write a, using your computer, write, write a song about happy puppies and a pickup truck. So I use human intelligence and pass that over to my younger colleague here.
How far did you get?
Um, who verse? So it says, in the bed of a pickup, under a sky so blue, happy puppies bouncing with tails wide and true. Their furry faces being wind whipping through their fur in the company of friends every moment so well.
So that's awesome. That was more than expected from, from a response. So that was, that was very good.
That was actually, it makes this next part really kind of trippy.
Well, no, it doesn't. So if that, you're given that type of question, they'll think about instructional practice. So the way that worked out, could, could there be a lesson around that? And could I assess that in some way based on that response? I think in terms of, I was not an English teacher, but I think there are some things there. We could say you met certain objectives to do and do that by yourself. But what if that wasn't the part of the lesson? So what if I had the same prompt? Write a song about happy puppies and pickup trucks because they're my two favorite things.
Chat GPT has failed me. I want to log in. No. The internet has failed me.
Okay, then we're just going to say goodbye.
Just going to say goodbye.
Goodbye, chat. So the point that we're going to try to get to is I could have that produce a whole song. But as a learning tool, would that be a good use of that tool? That was much more authentic, right?
I liked that one.
But what if my assignment was to get a verse and then select instruments and write an accompaniment to that song? In other words, I had to write the music to the song. So at that point, okay, give me the words. Here's the, the verse. Now write the music to it. It's a different, if the emphasis was on the writing the music part, then I could use maybe chat GPT just to give me some lyrics because I need lyrics. Okay, so that's just the difference in how AI could either be used or not used in what is more purposeful for an, for an assignment. Okay?
So part of this task force was, we discovered very quickly, there's not a whole lot of work out there yet to rely on. Not, not a lot of research, not a lot of activities, not a lot of districts doing a lot. I mean, a lot of districts doing quite a bit, but in its infancy right now. So it's, it's, it's very fledgling. So at this point, we decided it's time to maybe create some partnerships with some other districts, do some research. And various members, we've attended conferences. We've, Aurora Public School District has been conducting its own. They call theirs the AI Steering Committee. They're doing a lot of professional development already. They've selected a tool for piloting. So I'm on that committee and I'm reporting back to the task force with what they're doing. Several of us, I think Nate was on this particular visit. We went down to DPS. They had an AI conference in January. So we went down to Denver and found out what they were doing. They're very heavily into policy. Matter of fact, Denver has policies specific to AI already adopted by their Board of Education. So the jury's out if that's the direction or not. Mr. Fall can, can talk to you more in a little bit about where we think we're going here. I spoke with the CIO Boulder Valley School District. They're in the midst of, they're, they're investigating policy right now. They're looking at piloting. But they're a lot of the same places we are right now, just kind of investigating, feeling out where they want to go, establishing partnerships. Information for other districts. I, I'm part of a Northeast Region Consortium, as well as on the Board of CalA now, which is the Colorado Association for Leadership and Educational Technology. Say that 10 times. So I have some really good contacts throughout, throughout the state now and hearing what other districts are doing. And so it's a very, it's a very wide, it's a very long continuum from absolutely nothing at all to what is AI to we have policy in place. These are the tools we've selected and this is how we're educating our kids. And this is how we introduce literacy to, to our, to our organization. And then we're also working, as I mentioned, with an independent consultant. She is providing us guidance and leadership and kind of bouncing ideas off of her as we go through this process of establishing what District Six can do with AI, what we should be doing, ethics, safety, policy, you name it. And she's helping us through this and navigating. I want to turn this over to Mr. Dagan Andrews, our Director of Curriculum and Personalized Learning.
Thanks, Tony. So I, I think there's some real, we think, there's some real exciting opportunities for our instructional staff and beyond. One of the places we really look at and we're thinking about in terms of productivity is thinking about our teacher workload. And thinking about that in terms of the work that we're already doing that's aligned to our strategic plan and the work that we're doing. So when we look, look at our work around our PLCs, our professional learning communities, where teachers come together, look at student data. And then we're specifically working in terms of claim evidence and reasoning. And so one of the things that's an incredible piece of that workload is students grade, our teachers grading student work. And so you think about two or three page papers, those kinds of pieces. That adds a lot to the teachers, usually our weekends, right? Where we spend grading papers. And so there's actually a tool out there where we can put in a rubric. We can put in all of our student work. It automatically scores the student work based upon that particular rubric. And then it also breaks it down in terms of what are the strengths in the student work that we see? And what are the potential, or what are the weaknesses? And so teachers and their PLCs can really look at, I have five students who really need to work on their thesis statement. I may have 10 students who really need to work on linking their evidence to their claim. And so it already provides that work for teachers. So when they get together, they can really focus on lesson planning, which is kind of interesting because AI can also support with lesson planning specific to how do I support teacher or students in creating a thesis statement linked to a strong claim? And so this is the kind of work that we're incredibly excited about, is helping support teachers and thinking about their workload. We also know in terms of thinking about creating a more personalized learning experience for our students, we can provide students with real time feedback as they're writing. So they can write a thesis statement and get feedback right in the moment from AI to talk about what are their strengths and weaknesses right there so they can improve at real time before a teacher even has to come over. So there's some really exciting opportunities in the area of productivity, instructional uses. There's also some incredible opportunities. I was able to see some students in a classroom using a program called Auto Auto, where students literally have a robotic car and they're programming in Python and training the car to avoid obstacles and learning how to avoid spaces and how to navigate. And so they're actually working on autonomous driving vehicles in a small kind of laboratory environment, which is pretty incredible to help students in this world of AI and think about career pathways as well. Clearly, within this work, we need to support our teachers. And what we're hearing is they need support and really understanding what AI is, what are the strengths and what are the pitfalls that can come out of it? And thinking about these tools, like I talked about, CoGrader is an example of a tool like this that we're exploring and think about. And thinking about, um, these tools, like I talked about, CoGrader is an example of a tool like this that we're exploring and think about. That can help them in terms of their own workload and performance. And then really, I think probably our most challenging task, and it's kind of what, um, both Kent and Tony were alluding to, is creating AI-worthy tasks. Where AI can't do all of that work and creating tasks in such a way that really bring in the human element. And their critical thinking skills and analytical skills to leverage AI, but really put their own thinking and work and allowing the AI to accelerate their progress. But for them to bring the higher level pieces that we as human beings bring.
Thank you, Dagan, I appreciate that. As with any tool, um, there are safe ways and unsafe ways and dangers and pitfalls. So I've asked Scott Tissinger, our cybersecurity engineer, to speak a little bit toward those ends.
Okay, so we've heard about all, all the sort of the great things we wanna do, um, with some of this stuff and some of the, some of the issue areas. We need some policy, we need some professional development. And, and we do wanna, as we move forward, move forward in a sure-footed way as a district. And sort of infuse a few key things into, um, you know, we have policy areas that already talk about acceptable use and things like that. So extending them into AI, sort of bringing kind of what's nebulous to a lot of people down into the practical realm. And say, yeah, well, this is like the things you've already done in terms of how you behave as a student, how you behave as a staff member. But also practically speaking, here's some new things to also add in and keep in mind. To take sort of the nebulous and like, here's how you move forward and protect like students' intellectual property as they move forward and use these tools. Here's how you use these tools and protect the private data. There are ways where it's kind of very public and there's ways that it can be protected. It's very easy to do once you're educated, and this is where our professional development comes in. And this is where the teachers sort of bring that down into the classroom and help the students understand how to do it. So we, we just wanna make sure those, those pieces are considered, um, that we bring forward to you. The, the sort of the, the add-ons, the, the extra parts that will help make that work in terms of policy. Uh, and then bring those things into our professional development so that everyone, so that goes from just sort of a theory and a, and a nebulous area down directly into, here's our practice, here's what we're doing, and, and make sure that, that we, we do it the right way. So that's, that's, that's my summary there.
Thank you.
Nate, do you have anything to add as far as policy?
So we're still actively working on policy changes. We are taking, you know, the advice of some of those other school districts that Tony and Ken have mentioned, in terms of kind of what their approach has been. We are also working with an outside contractor who is providing some suggested policy language. And so we just wanna make sure that we're taking this very carefully, um, and that we're not kind of overdoing it with policy. But we wanna make sure that anything that we include stays up to the times with this new technology. I would say in many ways, our acceptable use agreements can already do in many ways capture kind of these changing technologies. But I think in terms of specificity of use, we wanna make sure that we're capturing, um, kind of this different technology, just to make sure that we are aware of it. And that there are certain prohibited uses associated with that technology. So we're still kind of in work in progress, and we would hope to bring some proposed policy language to you in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Nate. I'll let Mr. Henson explain this particular slide as his brain.
So I call this my eye, because when I look at your, the charter that you have in front of you, to me, it's blah, 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 blah. This is how I think, this is my brain, so I had to make a mind map. And so this is really the work. And so as, as we've done research, and Tony mentioned that you talked about three, three or four different school districts, we're working with consultants. And if you look at these boxes here, and this may not be perfect, but that's the way I, I put it together. It really shows the work that needs to be done. And some of the relationships, there's other relationships out on there we could probably add. But kind of where we are, if we're giving you an update where this committee is, is that we've kind of worked through the definition of AI. We understand the need for policy, use of policy, we're kind of working on that. We started talking about educational goals. And then I think, you know, real safety and privacy, you just heard about, um, educational value there. Even though that's a small box, that's probably one of the most important boxes on this chart is why, why use a tool if it has no educational value? If we're using it in a class, in a classroom setting. So all of that, we need to research a little bit, and then press professional development is listed in there. So this tool, or this mind map just really recognizes the work that we know that we have to do. And the districts that Tony talked about are all over the place in what they've chosen to work on first. We know because of this complexity, we need to go slow to go fast, or maybe we don't have to go fast. Maybe it's just go slow and work through it and do what we think is most beneficial for us. Are there any questions on, on this?
Just a comment, I really appreciate the fact that you pointed out they need to have educational value. And then, and then the, the box at the bottom, the metrics for measuring achievement of goals, so yeah, if we're not.
Are the tools even working? I mean, are they, you know, are students learning by using the tool or not? So, so there's a lot of departments, there's a lot of people that we have working in District Six that will have help with all these different areas. But we don't really have a timeline in completion, we've just stepped out of the gate and, and here we go with that. So I hope this is helpful for you, because we took this mind map and put it into, what?
So, so this is Kent's, this is Kent's brain on GPT.
And, uh, that was less than useful.
What is, what is that word?
It's gibberish, so.
Okay.
That was, that was Kent's with real words, his real brain into Chat GPT. So Chat GPT isn't really good at taking concrete verbal type communications and creating images out of them. It doesn't understand like humans do that, wait a minute, um, you know, pol, uh, AI SC use is spelled UC, USC, not SE. Or it's, it's very, it'll get better, but it's not there.
I like the graphics.
So graphics were great.
So the point comes back to that we just always need to be careful of what we're doing. You can't just jump into the use of a tool and think it's better.
In, in absence of a policy right now, are there, um, are there procedures that are going on in the schools right now governing the use of AI? I mean, since we don't technically have a policy, what is going on out there?
So the answer's not specific, formal, but there are building leaders, taking, taking some initiative and, and trying to promote and govern some of these tools. And Dagan, you may have a better, better feel out there than I do, but no, there's no, nothing official out there.
It's kind of like the wild, wild west in a way.
It is the wild west. And we have not, we have chosen not to block things, because that's a, that's futile. You'll never, ever, ever block, there's always something that you'll forget. So embracing it and providing some of that governance and some of those guidelines is where we're at now with our committee. So I think you'll see some things coming out of our committee next that have some guardrails and some do's and don'ts and with whatever tool is chosen. I mean, it's gonna have the same type of, of, of recommendations. Did you wanna talk to anything about this one anymore, Kent?
No.
Okay. So as with anything that's, that's new, there's a national day around it. Um, on, on April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. It, there, there's a consortium of different AI and education. There's a bunch of entities, non-for-profits out there that are, that are surrounding this particular day. We're gonna go back, we have our next committee meeting, like I mentioned, this Wednesday. This is one of the topics on, on the agenda to be discussed, what we wanna do with anything around this particular day. If there's communications that we need to put out, if there's activities that seem relevant or useful. I don't know the answer to that question yet, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, there is a national day around it. And there's actually another one, um, called Day of AI that MIT is doing in May, um, that we may have some interest in as well, depending on, on what committee decides. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, um, that you may see some communications out around that particular day. So I will, I would like to leave you with these images, um, generated from the pictures of the insats and open it up for any questions.
There's definitely a bias toward hair.
I appreciate, I appreciate the gift of, you're regifting.
So do you have any questions?
I've got, uh, one, Tony. So what are, when, when we started talking about AI as it related to our, uh, I, twenty thirty. Initially, it was placed under security, safety and security. And, you know, when I think about AI and safety and security, when I put those things together, I start thinking Terminator. And, but I know that's probably weren't, not what you were thinking. And, and I'm just curious about the, the cybersecurity risk that, that AI produces for us in, in terms of, um, you know, I know it's helpful for us to be able to generate, uh, things that look, look great, but also those that want our information can generate emails that look very, very legit. And, um, yeah, how are, how are we addressing that?
Um, I may turn to Mr. Tissinger a little bit too, but I'd like, just like to preface this by, we use AI in our district to do the very thing you talked about, to try to fool people into clicking on things. So our cybersecurity awareness platform has an AI component in it that generates those emails that look just like something we may generate. Okay, so we're using it for good. There are others, as you identified, not using it for good. So that's a concern. Um, and, and we're, that's part of our cybersecurity awareness about phishing attacks, about, um, and that's one aspect of it. The other aspect is protecting our personally identifiable information, our student data, our faculty data, our employee data. Not putting things in there you wouldn't want your grandmother to see, or not putting things in there you wouldn't want your next door neighbor or a perfect stranger to see. Because that's ultimately who you're giving this information to. If you don't use the tools in a protected mode, and there's worries for many of these tools to be used where you're protected, your information is protected. But there are many tools out there that will not protect your information, and it's, and it's really, really incumbent upon us to read our private, the privacy policies and all those tools that we select. So that's why our committee kind of exists. One of our, one of our tenants is to go ahead and figure out what kind of guidance we can give to our teachers, to our students, to our community. And Scott, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, we kind of have a bifurcated discussion, right? So, so, uh, you, you asked about some specifics, and I, I maybe just take a couple of minutes for that. So we are essentially in what has been referred to as an arms race. But like, for example, the firewall that the district uses to keep the bad guys out, that has AI behind it. And so, um, as new clever attacks come, there's new clever defenses. And, and generally speaking, this, this all balances out reasonably well. And, and, and even though maybe, um, the explosion of generative AI has caught sort of the public's imagination more recently. The AI kind of arms race we're talking about has been going on for some time, for quite a while. And, and it continues, and frankly, um, in a lot of ways, it's easier to be a defender. But then like any type of, of attack sort of thing, um, you know, they do get lucky, and, and we're just ever vigilant, sort of that question. I think, um, today, the concern is, um, when you use these tools, you know, for example, we have a policy that says you won't, you'll protect student data. But a lot of people do not know, if I take like student work and I go to evaluate it with a free AI, that, that work becomes part of the public record in terms of what is presented and could be re-presented outside our district. That would be a cybersecurity concern. That's very pressing, and that's not really an attack per se, that's just, we need to make sure everyone who's using those tools understands. Like if it's free in particular, um, you're not gonna have control over where that information goes. So we wanna do great professional development, we wanna help students understand when they use these tools, what's happening with their data, what they're sort of opening themselves up to. So that they can understand and do it more responsibly. There's some very easy things to learn, some habits to get into that help you, um, in that area. So these are all the kinds of things we wanna, wanna keep focused on as we move forward in kind of generative AI and the sort of explosion of how those tools might be used.
So I think that points to like the breadth of the committee that we have right now, and as we expand it. Because like Dagan and I might look at it, we're thinking instructional use a lot from that, but he's always looking at it thinking from the cyber, you know, the cybersecurity part, which is real. And Tony's looking for platform and this, that, and the other. And so the more broad of a group that we have on this committee, the more we can look through those different lenses to help problem solve and isolate our path through that mind map.
I'm curious for teachers, do they have a tool where they could put in an assignment and see if a student has used AI, you know, to kind of cheat?
I don't know that. Dagan?
Well, I, who wants to take?
We have the same answer.
Let's hear your answer today.
The reality is that, uh, those detectors have been a hundred percent inaccurate. And so right now, people are looking for tools, but right now, there isn't a tool out there that is, um, that really does the job. How do I do?
You did excellent, thank you.
But students, I mean, teachers know they're students, right? They know the kind of work that they're capable of, somewhat like teaches French, right? And, um, Google Translate, any student can use Google Translate, but, but they don't generally fool the teacher, right? Because this teacher knows what, what a student is capable of, um, right? I mean, is that, or depending on?
Comes down to the authentic assessment and what you're trying to get at, so that you're truly assessing the skill. And you take all the other stuff out. Which comes down to lesson design.
And there are truly teachers out there, and maybe even our own district, I think you mentioned, that are designing curriculum, saying, use AI to do the following. Knowing that, encouraging that, but realizing that is not the end. It's not the end of the assignment. The end of the assignment could be now, using that information AI, return to you, analyze this, use your, use your brain, you know? And Dagan may have better information about that, but I've heard of examples like that, um, in lots of districts. Thank you. Other questions from board members?
Very fascinating. Guys, thank you for all of your work for this update tonight, and we appreciate it. I appreciate you being on the forefront and anxious to see where it all goes.
Thank you.
You're reading my email online now, great, thanks. Next on our agenda is our budget update. So Miss Sponsor, I imagine you're, you're coming to present, is there anyone coming with you?
That's gonna be a hard act to follow. So I really have, um, four different things that I want to touch on this evening. And the first one is we actually have a school finance act, which I don't know that that's ever happened in March before, but it is still March and we have it, so. That's kind of exciting. So just real quickly, I want to go over what's in that school finance act for this coming year. Inflation was certified at five point two percent. So the school finance act requires that the base funding is increased by that rate of inflation, so that's five point two percent. It does eliminate the budget stabilization factor for next year. It does also leave a placeholder in the event that they should ever need to, uh, use that tool again. So that is still there. It also establishes funding for what they call large and small rural districts. And this is something that has been kind of a, a goal of the Speaker of the House to actually get this funding into the school finance act. This doesn't impact us, we are way too big for that, but for really small and rural districts, they have in the past probably four to five years been getting one-time money, which they all very much appreciate, but it's one-time money. So you can't really plan using that system. So to pull this funding into the school finance act should really help those districts. And we're talking about districts that are less than sixty-five hundred students. And we're talking about districts that are less than 6,500 students. That's the definition of a large rural district. And then a small rural district is a district of less than 1,000 students. So very small districts, but this is funding that they, they really desperately need. And as kind of a system of CFOs and finance people across the state, we have all been behind them in saying, yes, they do need this funding. So that is actually included in this school finance act. And then the last thing that this does is it postpones the implementation of the at-risk factor for yet another year. This was something that was put into the school finance act last year, and then they decided that they needed to spend more time studying what that really would look like and what that means for school districts, which I think is a smart approach. And so they decided that they still have some work to do. They still want to study that and they want to do some more modeling with that information. So part of that is using not just the free and reduced lunch numbers, using direct certification for Medicaid or food stamps or whatever those, those programs might be, but also using some census data. So the question is, what census data do you use? How do you use it? And then how do you weight that census data? So I think they're really struggling with what does that look like? And that's been kind of tricky. So they're still working on that and I, I think they're actually getting some results that they didn't anticipate. So it might go back to the drawing board yet again. We'll see. But it is exciting to have this school finance act. It will be, it's scheduled to be heard in the Senate Education Committee on Wednesday. So if the ball is rolling, we'll see what happens with that. I don't really anticipate any major hiccups with that. This is not where points of contention lie, so this one should go pretty smoothly, I would guess. Now, shifting gears, there is word that there will also be another school finance act. And this will be a rewrite of the existing school finance act.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Okay, so the School Finance Act is an actual law, but then it's redone every year?
Yes.
Okay. Because like, we're excited that this rural funding's in there, but it could be out next year.
That's very true. It's possible.
But it's supposed to be ongoing funding so that they can plan?
Well, the way that I understood is they do like the one-time things before they can even qualify to go on the main. So it has to go at least a year as its own law and then it can get included in this. And then usually when they're in this, they're permanent, right?
Typically, yes. I would be very surprised if they pulled the rural funding out. I think what would be more likely is if they reinstate some sort of budget stabilization factor to take the funding for all districts down, if they need to find money to cut from the state budget.
Okay. I feel like it's like, almost like a misnomer to call it an act, because it's like a draft every.
It does get tweaked a little bit, but the general structure of the, the act has stayed the same really since 1994. There have been little adjustments here and there. But really what they have to do is they have to appropriate the funding. And so they have to identify in this bill, how much money will go into K-12 education.
Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, good question. So the rewrite of the school finance act is something that the Speaker of the House, Julie McCloskey, is very, very adamant about. She is very convicted in her beliefs and she's taking this very seriously. We, as a district with Dr. Pilch, believe that this is the right thing to do. This is the right direction to go in terms of rewriting the school finance act. So Dr. Pilch has been instrumental with her colleagues, speaking with the Speaker, talking with different legislators. We spoke with Mary Young last week about this to kind of let her know what our thoughts were about this. And so this is kind of an exciting time, but I will say that not all districts are on board with this. So we'll have to see where this goes. But really, the gist of this rewrite is to take the funding away from kind of a district-centric approach and make this more of a student-centric approach. And so some of the things, I think we've talked about the cost of living factor in the past. One of the goals of this is to kind of, as they say, fix the order of operations in the formula. So the way the cost of living factor works right now, it's at the very front of that formula, so it impacts everything on down the line. This would change that so that it's not impacting everything. It's just a, it's kind of a standalone calculation. Would also eliminate the personnel factor and change the size factor. So a couple of things that are really district characteristics rather than student characteristics. It does though increase the weights for at-risk and ELL students. And then it adds a, a new formula component that would be for special ed students. And so those three things are student-centric and could potentially be very impactful for District Six, just given our demographic and student population. Another thing that it adds that I think people are struggling with a little bit, how do you define this, is a remoteness factor. A lot of talk about districts that are far, far away from services and just the cost of doing business. If you have to have your HVAC serviced, you're going to have to pay a lot of money just for travel time to get somebody qualified to go out and look at it, diagnose it, maybe they have to go back, order parts, you know? Just the cost of that is pretty significant. So recognizing this remoteness factor for districts. The bill would, as it's proposed right now, would create a new floor funding level. So funding could not go below where it would be in '24, '25. So I think that gives districts some comfort that they would be, quote, held harmless if there are funding changes. They would keep a four-year averaging for declining enrollment. Currently, there's a five-year declining enrollment averaging in the law. This would drop it to four. The feeling is that that saves a little bit of money, but it also more closely represents actual student counts. And then the other thing about this is it would be phased in over six years. So that's something that we are kind of pushing back to say, six years is really, if you think about it, the entire school career for an elementary student. By the time they're from kindergarten into middle school, you know, six years to get fully funded through this new formula. So we're encouraging to reconsider that. I don't know if that's possible. We really don't know where six years came from, other than it kind of sounds good. So we're asking questions and trying to get a better understanding of that. This does not come without a cost. So once this is fully phased in, it would require about $498 million in additional funding statewide. So that's partly why I think the six-year phase-in, because if you can take 1/6 of that each year, then you probably have a little bit better handle on what the long-term budget implication looks like. And for District Six, just to give you an idea, because we actually got some runs on this last week, it would take our funding from $11,450 per student to $11,996 per student. And then that would be incrementally adjusted every year for six years. So it's a significant amount of money. It probably doesn't feel like it when you're implementing over six years, because it's really about $3 million a year. But if you look at, once it's fully implemented, to have 18 million in additional funding, that is pretty significant. So I just wanted to share that. We don't know exactly when the bill might be introduced, but we think that the Speaker is kind of focusing in on, on this proposal and trying to get some more support around that. So any questions on that piece?
You said it would take our funding from $11,450 roughly to $11,960?
$96.
$96. Would that additional funding, because it's student-centered, be attached to specific students and programs? How flexible, how much flexibility would this create for us?
That's a great question. I don't know that we have an answer to that yet, but I do think that we would still have the flexibility we would need. We might have to account for things a little bit differently, just to show that we are spending the money in the way it was intended. Special ed, for example, that's pretty easy to say, yes, we're getting this money for special ed students and we account for that separately. The at-risk, that's a little bit more challenging, just because we do have so many students to qualify as at-risk students. But I, I think that we will find ways and we'll get guidance to help us ensure that we're accounting for that correctly. Good question.
Where does the Speaker want to take this additional funding from?
Great question. So the plan right now is that it would come from the State Education Fund, which right now has a very healthy balance. But I do think there is some concern over the sustainability of that. You can only take $500 million out of, you know, a $1.5 billion pot so many times. So they're looking at ways to make that sustainable and make sure that they don't completely deplete that State Education Fund.
So the fund is $1.5 billion?
I think that's about right, the last time I heard.
So you could take it about three times?
Right.
If I'm doing the math right?
Yes.
But if we're only taking a little bit, well, not a little bit, but less out of it for six years?
Right, yes. So 1/6 over the next several years.
Because I assume more money gets put into it.
In theory, yes, there should be more money put in. It just depends on how everything gets spent out at the state level.
I was also thinking, isn't like the average term of a superintendent about three years?
That's the number I have heard, yes.
So six years is two superintendents. That's crazy.
Yeah, that's a long time. So stay tuned to that, but finally some movement. This is something that we've been advocating for, for a long, long time.
So that would be a rewrite of the 1994, so like the big buckets, which is?
Yes. All right, I'm going to pass two papers around. So the first one, the one that has some green shading on it, this is our current ESER III expenditures for this current year. As we've talked about, this is the last year for ESER money, so we plan to spend this out completely. And so that has left us with some challenging decisions to make. And so we have been talking with our district leadership team, we've been getting feedback from other groups, other stakeholders, on what's really important for us to keep, because it would be really easy for us to look at these ESER III items and say, well, that was temporary money, so sorry, so long. But that's not necessarily the right thing to do. So getting feedback on what has truly made a difference in our system, what do we need to keep, what could we maybe do a little bit differently so that we could maybe keep some, but not all of what we currently have in ESER? So the top sheet here has the, the different spending categories. So attendance advocates would be the top item there. We had a budget of $644,000. The, the way this is laid out, we've spent $429,000 and we have $214,000 encumbered. So we plan to spend out everything we have on that line item. The big groups that we have here are the attendance advocates, bottle fillers, Chromebooks, counselors, health clerks, an MTSS consultant, nurses, parent and family advocates, social workers, and technology coordinators. Then we have the District Six Online Academy. We had adjusted our staffing ratio, so that's been a significant investment. And then there's a line for what's called indirects. And those are funds that we are allowed to charge to grants to help offset some of the overhead costs. So that right now is a zero, but it will at the end have some dollars associated with it. Then there's a category called learning loss. And the way that, the reason that's broken out separately is because ESER III required that we spend at least 20% of the funds on what they called learning loss and recovering lost learning and helping kids get caught up. And so those things are broken out separately. So we have summer school, we had credit recovery specialists, the read and math 180. Again, you see chart, indirects. And then lastly, you have charter schools, because we've passed along a per pupil amount to our charters for each charter school. I wanted to share this because, one, I wanted to remind you what all we're spending our ESER money on, but also what's in the bottom corner here in the box, it shows exactly how many people we have been paying for out of ESER. And so almost 144 people have been paid for out of ESER. And so what do we do with those 144 people? It's a lot of people and cutting that many people just doesn't make sense. So as in admin team and district leadership, we have come up with a proposal. Cabinet team has spent quite a bit of time on this. And so I'll go to the next page and I will share what our thinking is at the moment. We'd like to make sure that we are on the right track, we're not going down a path that you all won't support. If we are, we need to regroup and rethink about that. So what I've done here is at the top, I've identified things that I'm calling ESER ad backs. So these are the things that we want to keep, that are currently being paid for out of ESER. Those would be counselors, social workers, parent and family advocates, health clerks, nurses, and the District Six Online Academy. Now, all of those things would be kept in whole or in part. Mostly, we're making a few little adjustments in some of those line items. Mostly, for example, like the District Six Online Academy, we would be reducing some staff, just like we are for all of our schools. That's an example. Then on the right-hand side, I have a list of things that are currently in ESER that we don't plan to continue. And those would be attendance advocates and credit recovery specialists. Those have been contractors that we have been contracting with zero dropouts. And we've been pretty clear all along that we, we contracted with them for a reason, knowing that this was short-term funding and that when the funding went away, these positions would also go away. So that's not a surprise to the contractor, but you know, there's always hope that we might find money to continue those things. The MTSS consultant, we have found some other grant funds that we plan to use to continue her work, although it will probably be on a reduced scale. The Chromebook replacement will continue to do that, but at a much slower pace. We had with ESER money been able to order thousands and thousands and thousands of Chromebooks and we needed them. Now we're going to be looking at maybe trying to stretch out the useful life of Chromebooks, not replacing quite so many every time. So we'll still be ordering them, but just not as many. Summer school is something else that will be shifted into mill levy override funding. And again, we'll try to reduce that to a little bit smaller scale. This year, it works out pretty well that, last year, we had five weeks of summer school and this year, with calendar falls, we'll have four weeks. So that's a reduction right there. But also just trying to be really intentional about what are the programs we're offering, who are the students that we're targeting, how many teachers, how much time, all of those things, so that we can try to be a little more mindful of the spending. And then the last thing on that list are the staffing ratio adjustments. And in general, we had about a two-student-to-teacher FTE adjustment to those ratios. That puts us pretty much in line with what we had before ESER and before COVID. So kind of going back to that time, it's easy to forget what that looked like. So kind of going back to that time, it's easy to forget what that looked like before COVID happened and before we had this funding. So I do think there's, you know, some principals and buildings out there going, ooh, that's a big hit. So we acknowledge that and we're working very hard to try to work with them, help teachers that might be displaced or not have a job, find a job. We have plenty of openings, so it might just mean shifting from one school to another. So at the bottom, in order to keep everything that we want to keep, we needed to find $11.5 billion. So we had to find ways to pay for that. And the staffing ratio adjustment was a big piece of that. So that's about $3.5 million there. And that's approximately 51 FTE. Special education, we looked to Tom and his team to help identify positions that we could reduce. And we've come up with one and a half certified teachers and about 25 classified positions that will be eliminated. Special ed, out-of-district transportation. You're probably looking at OOD and going, what is that? Out-of-district transportation. Currently, we contract with a company to provide transportation for students that attend school at a facility, maybe down in Denver or out of Greeley. And that is very expensive. So now that we actually have bus drivers and we're doing well with our own internal transportation, we plan to bring that back in-house and have some of our own transportation folks do that. We estimate that we can probably save about $300,000 by doing that. Similarly, we have contractors that we have contracted with other agencies to provide employees to work in our special ed programs. And when you look at the cost of contracting versus hiring our own people, it's very expensive. So we're estimating that we could save about $564,000 if we don't contract. We'll do our best. Then there's a line for other staffing reductions. These are kind of across the board, but one thing that we have done is when we have a vacant position or a position comes open, we're really looking at that and asking the question, do we need to fill that? And I'll use one of my positions as an example. I have an executive assistant position that hasn't been filled. And so that's one that I'm going to give up for the good of the cause, because it's something that we have figured out how to manage within our team without filling that position. So those are the kinds of things that that line identifies there. I will say that not everyone that is included in that number is aware of their status yet, so we're being careful about how we communicate that. Then the next three items are all adjustments to our mill levy override spending. So the tech infrastructure budget is currently $4.6 million and we can cut that back by about $2 million. And we'll still have $2.6 million, so that's still quite a bit of funding that we can work with. We've done a lot to upgrade our systems and put things in place, and so now it's just continuing to maintain that as we go. Deferred maintenance is very similar in that the budget right now is $3.7 million, so we would cut that back to $2 million. We've been doing some projects in conjunction with the bond where we wanted to expand the scope of the project a little bit and maybe we added an HBAC project on top of the bond project, and so we've been able to use mill levy override dollars for that. And then the curriculum adjustment, we would still have money in the curriculum budget, just not as much. And the plan is to hold off on any large adoptions next year and just push that off. We feel like the system has had enough change that we need to kind of let things settle into place and then we can look at the next round of adoptions. So all of those things together, we have about $11.2 million. So we're still a little bit short, but that's money that I feel confident that we can continue to tram here and there and we'll come up with that to bring a balanced budget to all of you in May. So what questions can I answer?
I have a question about the add-backs. Were we, so I'm just thinking salaries, right? Like nurses have higher salaries than maybe any other person on that list. Like, were we short nurses?
We had, yeah. So especially when the pandemic hit, we, our nurses were stretched super thin. And I think that we have realized that they still have a really big caseload. They're still sharing schools many times, so they're going back and forth between schools, they're delegating their responsibilities to health clerks. And so we just felt like we really can't cut any of those positions. They're vital.
I just need some clarity, I guess, because on the first sheet, you, it looked like you're cutting 100.75 certified FTE, but then it's over here, it's 51? Am I...
Right, so that includes some, not only the staffing ratio reduction, but the, like, social workers and counselors are also included in that number. Because they're also certified staff.
So out of that 100, we're cutting 51?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, you got it.
Thank you. What is the APT? Is it assistant principal, the chancellor?
APT is administrative professional and technical. So they're people that are not on the teacher salary schedule.
And then how many of these hours are positions weren't filled or are all of these hours we are actually cutting?
That's a great question. So some of these, for example, social workers and counselors, those have been hard to fill. And so there are some positions that were not filled. So that's where it's been a little easier to look at those and say, well, it wasn't filled, so we can maybe rearrange how we are utilizing this group of employees and still meet the needs, but just have fewer people, fewer positions.
Any other questions, guys?
Some of the things we moved on to the MLO. We had a shortfall in our MLO as well.
Right.
But we still feel like those are things that can be absorbed.
Yes, I feel confident that we can make that work. It is going to be a little bit of shifting here and there to make everything balance out, but I'm pretty sure we can figure that out.
On your deferred maintenance, that's just a budget that you put into basically savings or actual maintenance, right? So you're just lowering the amount that we're holding back for future repairs?
Right, yep.
Do you have a number, or is it too early to ask? For the certified that have been cut for teaching positions, have there been positions that were not filled that we're keeping, that we've been able to roll over? So how many teachers have we been able to preserve?
I couldn't give you a number right now. I know it's constantly changing and it's changing hour by hour.
Too early, yes.
I tried to look at that before I came down and it's just, there's too much movement at the moment to try to pin that down.
I figured it was too early for that one.
Will there be any changes at all to the online academy? Or are you figuring it stays basically the same?
So it will be changed. They'll be losing quite a few staff members and so, especially at the elementary level, looking at combining grade levels, so it will be like a kinder in first grade, second and third. Trying to combine those because we found at the elementary level, the number of students was really low. And so it was really hard to staff at our regular ratio and have, you know, 10 kids or 11 kids in first grade and be able to justify that. So combining some of those classes, it'll look different.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Spence.
Thank you.
Now, a debriefing the work session. So start with you, Mr. Rosari. We'll start with Taylor Vista.
Lot of information here to take in with the budget, but some good things, some bad things, obviously, but thank you for the information and clarifying some questions. AI, I have a lot of questions on, just for the authenticity of students' learning, I guess. And that, like, just being a former teacher, that is in the back of my head as to how the teachers are going to be able to regulate that in their classrooms and whatnot. And I know you guys haven't even been able to touch on that aspect, but that's the one that's probably spinning most in my head right now. So, but thank you for getting the lead on this and getting out there and really trying to get a plan of action going. Appreciate that time on that.
Brenda?
Yeah, likewise for the AI committee, the task force, looking at ways to decrease teacher workload, I think is great, as long as it's like appropriate, you know, and that students are still getting good feedback on their work. And agree with Taylor, concerned about cheating, you know, and because that won't add educational value. But I know it's things that are on your minds and glad we have this task force. And as far as the budget, thank you for updating us on every, the goings-on of the Colorado School Finance Act. Agreed, super exciting. The rewrite, I think, is necessary. I love the idea of student-centric versus district-centric and the dollars following our students. And hoping that in the future, if this gets adopted and implemented well, that we might be able to have that staffing ratio that we used to before, or with the ESER dollars. So probably that and the summer school are the things that I'm most sad about, adding those two students back to each FTE and kind of going backwards on that. And the student loss, you know, I know we're going to preserve some summer school, but glad that we were able to use this opportunity to not just cut the, you know, all those positions that were added with the ESER dollars, but to do it mindfully. And I'm proud of our finance team for doing this part that's so hard. Thanks.
Thank you, Brenda. Kyle?
Yeah, just, I think you guys for all the work on this. On the AI front, there's, I think, there's an old saying, this is, two guaranteed things in life, death and taxes. And at least in my work, we all say, there's three, there's death, taxes, and change. It's just exciting to hear you guys not just trying to block it out, but to be thoughtful in how we can use it as a tool and a resource, because it probably is the future, more than likely to some degree. There'll be some, a lot of arguments along the way of how, who, what, where, and how, but it is going to be a huge tool. So it's exciting and scary at the same time, but I appreciate you guys being thoughtful and innovative in that sense. And then just thanks to Megan and her team on the budget. We knew this was coming since the day they issued that, the money, the one-time money, basically, you know, even though it's a couple of years, is still, is not fun, but it needed spent and we spent it and we're kind of on the backside of that. So hopefully everybody kind of realizes that on the human side, that they did a really good job of trying to keep the human factor accountable, you know, down to the point where, you know, we're deferring budget money for repairs, you know, that are going to, for sure be needed in the future. So not fun, but it's part of the gig. So thank you guys for doing that hard work.
Doran?
I agree with what's already been said. I appreciate Kent explaining the different functions of the folks that are on his team in regards to AI. It seems to me to be laid out really, really clear, with the exception of what goes on in Kent's mind, that's not as clear. But it's a really great team and I'm looking forward to the opportunity for us to have an established policy in regards to that. But I have a feeling that that policy will always be in flux and changing as we move through the innovations in AI and technology in general. And I appreciate, as I always have throughout my entire career, the folks in the finance and especially Megan and her team, Mandy Heidock, et cetera, who continually work to keep cuts away from, again, as Kyle said, a human, our people on the ground, to be in touch with how they feel and their needs as we continue to navigate. And it seems to me that it's always going to be in this will-see mode forever in regards to school funding. But I feel that our professionals on the ground here in School District Six do a good job of navigating through that and I really appreciate it. So thank you, President Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Rosari. Natalie, why don't we go to you first and then we'll come back to the center.
For me, just as a student, hearing the actual thought and process that not only the task force for the AI are doing, but also like the finance, it's just, it makes me feel kind of like heard and making sure that everything is for the benefit of the students. And so I appreciate both, everybody on the finance side of it and then also just AI. And it's just, again, always, I love learning about things like this and I'm just very happy to be here as always, so.
Thank you, Natalie. Vice President Natalie Mash.
Yeah, I don't think I have much to add. I know very little about AI, so it was even just helpful to be like, is this AI? Is this AI? A friend of mine just told me, she's like, yeah, I use ChatGPT to make a menu for a family of four who is vegetarian. And then I said, make a shopping list based on that menu. And so I'm going shopping and I'm like, what? That's, that's amazing. I have to try that, so. Yeah, I am curious what ways it can help with our teacher workload and some of the tasky things. And then, yeah, the budget, I didn't have any concerns that our budget team would have, you know, I knew that you'd do a great job. And again, I'm always impressed with how much our finance team knows what the dollars mean, what the programs mean, understands that these are people and programs. And so I feel really confident that, yeah, that this is a good plan. And it's amazing how somebody has said, you know, that works at the speed of government and man, government is so slow. I just can't even, let's change something that's been in place since 1994. Okay, well, 20, 30 years later, we'll, we'll see some, some start of progress. So we just keep working.
Well, we did get the bill in March this year, so.
Okay, there you go. So speedy.
Thank you, everybody. So much work that goes into these presentations and all that you're doing behind what you present to us. And we appreciate the work, but we're out of time and our work session is adjourned. We'll be back at 6 for our business meeting.